We'll call to order the November Pecosin City School Board meeting. And first on the agenda is our pledge and inspirational reading. Jesse, would you introduce our speakers?
Audrey Merritt. Audrey is a 5th grade student in Ms. Novy's class at Pecosin Elementary School. Her favorite subject is social studies and she likes to draw in her spare time. Audrey plays Virginia Rush soccer and her team is called Search. She also cheers for the Pecosin Bulls midget football team. When she grows up, she thinks she would like to be a veterinarian.
Please join with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joey Elshanti is a 5th grade student in Ms. Ostrander's class at Pecosin Elementary School. He loves math and reading and is currently reading The Lightning Thief. Joey plays Virginia Rush soccer on the Penn United team. His favorite place to go is GameStop. When he grows up, he would like to be a lawyer or a professional soccer player.
The title of my poem is called Washington DC. It is by Rebecca K. Dotlich. On the east bank of the Potomac lies Washington DC, the capital of our nation which stands for liberty. It's here our US presidents are sworn into command, where the courtly US Capitol and the stately White House stand. Sweet cherry blossoms spice the air of city blocks and patterned squares. And grassy nosegys and splendid parks claim rare museums and grand landmarks. Where patriotic monuments stand haunting in the night, where King proclaimed "I have a dream" and Kennedy's flame burns bright. It's here in a place called Arlington, where stars and stripes do fly, where silent snow-white tombstones march in rows where heroes lie. The tomb of the unknown soldier, the changing of the guard, the gardens and the galleries, the tree-lined boulevards. From around the world they come to touch with tears and hush to claim. The sleek and sacred granite walls engraved with soldiers' names. On the east bank of the Potomac lies Washington DC, the capital of our nation which stands for liberty.
Okay, next we'll move into student presentations. And students, if you can hang around for just a few minutes after you're done with your presentations, we're going to take a short break and the board members would like to come around and speak with you for a few minutes. Several students from Ms. Griffin's 3rd grade class will present a PowerPoint and will discuss their pizza economics lessons. Take it away, students.
Bonjour now. I'm Carrie Griffin, just one small part of the fabulous 3rd grade team at PES. Each year, our 3rd grade teachers coordinate a fun, culminating review day at the end of our economics unit. Pizza Economics Day is one of the highlights of our school year and incorporates all of the essential knowledge for economics. Parents send in pizza-making supplies and students enjoy applying their knowledge in real-world situations. I brought a few of my sous chefs to explain how we spend our day.
Hi. Hi, I'm Cal. To be official, every chef needs a hat. We began our pizza day by making our own chef hats. Each student was a producer of their hat. Producers make products. The product was our hat. When we were done, we turned into consumers because we were using our hats. Consumers use the products producers make. Wow, we're both!
Hi, I'm Logan. Next, we read the book The Little Red Hen Makes a Pizza. We discussed the sequencing of the pizza-making process. It was fun to see many of our economic vocabulary words come to life on those pages. Little did we know how much fun we would be having learning to make a pizza that day. Wait, did I say fun and learning in the same sentence?
Hi, I'm Robbie. Once we decided the steps to making a pizza, we were divided into restaurant teams by our head chef, Mrs. Griffin. Each group created a restaurant name, how it would look, and made an advertisement. Here are the restaurants that formed that day. Pizza Town, Big Boys Pizza, Initials Pizzeria, and the Big Papa Pizzeria.
Hi, I'm Kendall. After we created our restaurants, each group was given a budget of $40. We chose two buyers to buy the supplies, or goods we needed to make our restaurant's pizza. The goods were donated by parents and they included pizza cutters, rolling pins, baking pans, spatulas, cheese, sauce, and of course, dough. If there weren't enough items, then they were scarce. This meant buyers would need to make an economic choice and leave behind an opportunity cost. Then each group decided who would provide which services, which became their specialties. This means each group member was given a single job to do. These jobs included the buyers, dough rollers, sauce spreaders, and cheese sprinklers. Mama mia!
Here are the producers working in their specialties to create the restaurant's pizza. Looks mighty tasty, doesn't it? Once the pizzas were created, restaurants were ready to bake. Can't you just smell that cheesy goodness?
After each pizza was baked, the class voted on the best-looking pizza. It was a tie between a jack-o'-lantern shape and a traditional circle. Boy, I'm getting hungry. Is it time for dinner yet?
The winner of the best tasting pizza went to everyone. I mean, just how can you choose? With so many chefs knowing so much about economics, it had to be good no matter what.
Time to consume! We turned into consumers again when we enjoyed our production. We used all three types of resources to make our pizzas. Human, us. Natural, cheese, dough, and sauce. And capital. All of the tools we used.
Just two of the many valuable lessons we learned. It's easier to work together and have specialties and...
We love pizza!
As you can see, you can have all your pizza economics and eat it too. We hope you enjoyed our presentation. Brody! Ciao!
Do you deliver?
Very well done. Thank you very much, Ms. Griffin. Is it just coincidence that we had an economics lesson by 3rd graders and a poem about Washington DC tonight? You guys could teach them something. Good job. Dr. Parrish, do we have any additions and modifications to the agenda?
We do not this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Carter heads the podium. I'd like to invite Mrs. Tammy Burgett to come forward. She's a staff partner for the York Pecosin Relay for Life and is here to recognize our school division for its participation in the Relay for Life.
Well, that's a really hard act to follow. It sounds wonderful and I was getting hungry while I was watching y'all. As Dr. Parrish mentioned, I am with the Relay for Life. I'm the staff partner for the York Pecosin Relay for Life event. And I'm here to talk a little bit about how y'all did last year. We like to compare ourselves year to year. And the school participation for York, I am happy to say, is 100%. That is a huge task to accomplish and you are one of the very few cities in the area that have 100% school participation. So, a big hand to all of you that participate and we hope to see some more of you out there. Last year, Pecosin area had six teams. You had 99 participants and you raised $13,190. So, that is incredible. That was a total of a little bit over 5% of what the whole York Pecosin Relay raised. And there were a total of 57 teams. So, that's very, very good. And I'm really happy to say that the Pecosin Primary School team, Pause for a Cause, was the top team of the Pecosin teams and they raised $8,096, which was 61% of the total that all of the York schools raised. So, a big hand to all those participants. In 2013, we expect to see all the teams back. We've been in contact with most of them already, so we're looking for, again, 100% participation and hopefully we'll grow those teams a little bit more. As the staff partner for the American Cancer Society, I'm here to help any of the teams or any individuals if you have questions about what you can do to help Relay for Life or American Cancer Society in general. So, I just want to thank you for your time today and I want to present this little certificate for your 100% participation to the school board. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll take a short recess.
As you interact with the board...
Okay, next up will be presentations and reports and we'll start with our financial update from Mr. Bowen.
Good evening Chairman Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. I have just a couple of quick items to present to you this evening as part of the finance update. What I'd first like to start with is with the budget update. There's not a lot of news, new news for the budget. The governor's releasing his budget on December 17th, but we did hear some news here of the last week. The state released its revenue collections through the month of October. It was very good news. The revenue for October was up 15% over the same month from last year. Very good news. But this comes on the heels of a rather flat September revenue collection. But the point here I wanted to make was that for the year, through the first four months of the fiscal year, state revenue collections are 1.3% above projections. So, right now, we're a little bit ahead, heading into the holiday season. So, it should be good news. I attended the Virginia Association of School Business Officials Conference on November 1st and we had several state officials come and talk to us and we were asking questions about the state budget. What do you know? What can you tell us? And there was not a lot of information that was shared, but the one thing they did tell us was, well, we haven't heard from the governor yet requesting or ordering state agencies to plan for budget cuts. Well, less than a week later, two days after the election, the governor ordered state agencies to plan for 4% reductions. It's since come out that the governor was largely concerned about the fiscal cliff and sequestration, something we shared with the board in August, something that we are still concerned about. But we understand that there are some talks going on and we hope that those cuts will be averted. So, that's where we stand right now. There are still some uncertainty on the long-term economic outlook. When you see revenue basically flatten September and then increase as large as it did in October, still some volatility in the economy. The second thing I'd like to talk to you about this evening is about accounting and reporting for pensions. The Governmental Accounting and Standards Board has recently approved two new pronouncements. Now, let me stop right there and just say, normally finance directors don't stand before a school board and talk about GASB pronouncements. But these two could have an impact on the local government. So, it's worth just talking to you about this and what this really means. GASB 67 covers the accounting and reporting for the pension, VRS. GASB 68 deals with accounting and reporting for employers, so the state as an employer and local governments and school divisions as employers. The standards that were approved in no way deal with how governments are going to fund the pension. Now, we know that there are significant issues with VRS. VRS is underfunded. Just for the 2010-2012 biennium, the state underfunded VRS by some $620 million. To add to that problem, the rate of return that the VRS experienced for June 30, 2012 was about 1.4%. Their estimated return for actuary purposes is 7%. So, they assume a 7% return each year and we only had a 1.4% return. So, we've done some things last year with VRS. We're now requiring employees to pay a portion of their VRS, but with all the changes that have happened with VRS, we still have a problem. But this is really not addressing the funding issue, but I wanted to make that point. What's happening with the GASB pronouncement is that the employers and local governments participating in a defined benefit plan. Now, VRS is a defined benefit plan. And what that means is the employer, Pecosin City Public Schools, contributes to VRS on behalf of the employee. The employee is now contributing a percentage to that fund. And when they retire, when that employee retires, we are guaranteeing them a benefit, regardless of what happens with the VRS. If it does great, then the fund does well. If it doesn't do well, we're still guaranteeing that benefit to them. So, along with that, and where we're at right now, we have a substantial liability. It's about $15 billion statewide. And so now, the GASB pronouncement is going to require that local governments show that liability on their financial statements. Whereas before, it's just a note in the financial statements and it's not really reflected, but now it's going to be as part of the liabilities of that financial statement. Now, what does that impact really mean? What it means is that, let me start with the analysis that was done here on June 30. The VRS actuary performed the analysis of the fund and it reflected a net pension liability of almost $23 million just for PCPS. So, had these rules been in place, we would be reflecting this liability on our financial statements. Now, the city, we are a component unit of the city when it comes to financial reporting purposes. So, our financial records are then incorporated in what's called the CAFFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, that the city prepares. So, what impact might this have by adding this additional liability? Well, it could impact the bond ratings for localities. Pecosin right now enjoys one of the highest ratings that a locality can receive as far as bond ratings. But when you add this liability to the financial statements, it could have an impact. In addition, if it affects the bond, if it affects the bond ratings, it could affect future funding of capital projects. So, that's kind of just the nuts and bolts of the new pronouncement, something that is not set to go into effect until 2015. There are agencies out there, some bond rating agencies, that are trying to push this up sooner than the 2015 deadline and also to take a more conservative approach to the actual valuation methods. So, instead of a 7% valuation, they would prefer we use a 5.5% valuation. What that would do is that would take that $23 million liability and bump it up to over $30 million, only making the problem worse. So, this is something that certainly we wanted to disclose to you. We have a couple of years at this point before it takes effect, but it might be something that will come up in discussions as we talk to our city about capital projects and funding. And that's my finance update for this evening.
Questions?
Bill, why would the bond reading companies want to push this up? What is the motivation?
Well, the bond ratings companies have really been behind this because they think it provides a more accurate reflection and disclosure when it's included in the financial statements and not just as a note to the financial statement. So, a lot of governments are having the same problem that the state of Virginia and the school divisions are having here with underfunded pensions. So, they just believe that this is a more accurate reflection, including it in the financial statements, of the overall financial positions of those governments.
Has this happened in other states?
Well, this is nationwide, so this is going to apply to everyone, not just Virginia. It's going to apply to everyone. So, this is going to affect local governments nationwide.
Bill?
So, I assume that every locality has something like a note now and now have to actually disclose it as a line item?
Yes, that's correct.
And predominantly, do most folks put it as a note?
Yes, that's how it's currently handling. Now, there's some other school divisions, some of the largest ones. I believe Fairfax, I think, is the largest school division. It's hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars that they're going to be having to disclose. $23 million sounds a lot to us, but in the grand scheme of things, statewide basis, we're relatively small.
And I'm sorry, Chairman.
Wait, sir.
I assume that if there was not a liability, there was a surplus, then that would be shown also?
Yes.
Which is a very funny thing to talk about right now.
Yeah, well, the last time I believe the VRS showed a surplus or was about, shown a broken even was back in 2001, 2002. Economy was doing very well. There were high earnings. And then, we've seen the economy drop off in there and then it just dropped off completely in 2008. The 2008 economic crash really contributed to the problem that we're having now. And then, on top of that, we just haven't been funding it like we should. But there goes to say, the fact that the state has not funded it allowed the school divisions and other local governments to really balance their budgets through these economic times. I will tell you that by 2018, we will be having to fully fund what the actuary says we have to fund. So, this problem's not going away. It's only going to get worse.
When is my term over?
Not soon enough.
You said we had an excellent bond rating right now?
The city does, yes.
But that's relative to other locales, right?
Well, I do believe they have one of the highest, the highest rating from Moody's. One of the other rating companies was just below their highest. So, I mean, if you can get the higher rating from Moody's, that's the best.
I guess where I was going is if all locales are going to face the same issue, then everybody's bond rating should come down?
There is that potential, yes.
Right. So, there is also the potential for ours to remain high relative to everybody else's. Is that correct?
Correct. We'll have to wait and see how that is. The news is that if really, if it takes a more conservative approach and really, one of the bond rating companies is behind that, that it really could send some localities, they could be underwater. I mean, kind of like we are in some of the homes that we have. So, it could really have a negative impact and not only just change the bond rating, but really limit your ability to borrow for future projects.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much, sir.
Next up, we have the operations update from Mr. Papas. Thank you very much, sir. Next up, we have the operations update from Mr. Papas.
Good evening, Mr. Carter, School Board, Dr. Parrish. This evening, in the area of operations, I'm going to talk about a few of the areas. In the area of transportation, the Office of Pupil Transportation at the Department of Education did an audit on us. That's the first time we've been audited that anyone can remember. You get 24 hours notice, and they come in and they go through at least 24 different areas that we are responsible for. These are such things as bus and pedestrian traffic patterns at each school, our training schedule of students, our training of bus drivers, our in-service, the components of our in-service, our DMV records, and so on, and they want to see them all. The only comment we received was that we need to update one of our forms to reflect the most current changes that just happened. We're already doing that. And aside from that, all of our administrative requirements were met, and we passed with flying colors. Also, in the area of transportation, we are a component of the annual school report. So, we just had to finish that after Mr. Bowen finished his, then we get released to do ours. And that entails a complete disaggregation of the number of staff, the wages by staff types, special ed, regular ed, how many buses you have, how many special ed buses you have, how many buses are used for field trips, how many miles you use for field trips, how many miles, and on and on. So, we just finished all of that reporting. In the area of safety, Todd Pirelli, his staff and students participated, as you may recall, in the Great Shakeout. They were part of the 1.8 million Virginians who did so this first year. Todd did that gracefully, his teachers gave him some feedback, and we're going to roll it out with all of our schools next year. In the area of food service, continuation of maybe pizza economics, you know, we and other schools, school food service authorities across the country have all been modifying their menus as a function of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act and all the changes that are programmed over the next seven years. Well, we're no different than that. One of the things that is a component of that is the opportunity on an optional basis for us to receive six additional cents per eligible meal. So, you say, what's an eligible meal? An eligible meal is when a student takes all of the required components. If they miss one component, it's not a reimbursable or eligible meal. So, only the eligible meals. In order to qualify for the six cents, you have to go through quite a process. In fact, we had a full day's training, webinars on other days on how to complete all of the forms necessary to get the six cents. We've done all the work. We're about to submit it. That will garner us, for us, all of that work will get us $800 last month. That $800 is very helpful, I can assure you, with the change in menus. Unfortunately, it doesn't cover the costs that are concomitant with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. We're still suffering because of the changes in the menus, the change in the product offered, and that results in a change in capture. And that's where we are in operations.
Comments or questions?
Is this considered to be an unfunded mandate?
Yeah, we participate in the National School Health Lunch Program, so yes, we have to comply with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. We have to incorporate the different components as the years go. Next year, breakfast changes. This year, we don't have to do breakfast. We could have, but we opted not to. Virtually everybody opted not to change the breakfast. It's going to be a dramatic shift in what we serve.
So, it is in essence an unfunded mandate because what we're seeing now is, you know, we are losing funding and that not as many students are buying lunch, and so we're not bringing in the same amount of funds, and so we're monitoring it carefully because it could have an impact on budget as we move through the year. We were very concerned about this because we knew that we'd have students that just would choose not to eat the food selections that we're now required to provide and would bring food in from home.
So, how much money have we lost because of this? Do you have any idea?
I just did a financial review. We're off about $4,000 from last year for just this last, the month of October. But this is our first full month. That's the first month that we can gauge what really happens.
And we're off $4,000 just for the month?
Yes, sir.
Right, that was a surprise. Sorry.
Well, we're going to get $800 back.
Wow.
So, Chris, the Food Service Director and I met today at length. We are going to start looking at some other things. You have to realize, she's been very good at cutting expenses. She's reduced our expenses for this month. They dropped 15% compared to last year. Okay, that's great, but we're still small. It's very hard to keep cutting. Other schools, bigger schools, that are experiencing similar decreases in capture have a lot more flexibility. We've been cutting forever. So, we have to look at what it's going to take to increase participation.
What are the consequences of opting out of the program?
Well, it is something that can be done. I haven't even spoken to the superintendent about this, but Chris and I discussed that today. I have not discussed it at length. I'd have to do a pro forma. It wouldn't be something that we would do until next year. And at that point, you know, I have to decide if it's financially viable, if it's going to turn us around, what schools, if any, would do that. It's a big decision.
I wonder if it cost us more than $30,000?
Well...
Would they fine us? I mean, how does that work?
No, you lose commodities, first of all, which we get over $40,000 in commodities a year. So, you lose some commodities. Let's say you did it at one school, just pick the high school, assuming it's 25% capture, you're going to lose 25% right there. Then you're not going to get reimbursement for anything other than free and reduced children because you wouldn't have reimbursable meals because you're not in the program. You could charge more. Again, it's a long, drawn-out process for me to do the financial assessment to see if it would garner a change in capture, an increase in average check, and you're going to have a food cost impact, so there's lots of offsetting.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve, I was wondering, percentage-wise and apples-to-apples, are students buying more in kindergarten and first grade?
Mm-hmm.
Where, you know, they're just starting the school.
Biggest impact is middle and high school. Middle and high school are the biggest impacts.
They're buying more?
They're buying less.
Right, so the primary school is selling more?
The capture has dropped.
Aramark lunches?
Well, I'm not saying they're not down as well, but those numbers are holding better than at the high school and the middle school. And again, you can't serve french fries every day. You can't serve the things that students want every day. If you didn't participate in the National School Lunch Program, then theoretically, you know, you could have a smorgasbord of items, but the price would go up, and there's a whole price sensitivity as well. So, there's a lot to be considered. We are still working on, Chris is working with the regional vice president. We're looking at tweaking some of the menu offerings, still being in compliance. We knew this was going to happen. We talked about this, as you recall, last year and the year before in preparation. We knew capture rates were going to go down. And we're experiencing that now. We're trying to make the adjustments.
For those of you that don't know, Chris Ziegler is the Food Services Director from Aramark, who is, remember that we contract out for food service. So, we are working with, Aramark is a national company that is working with school divisions across the country as well as higher ed and other areas. So, the good news is by actually contracting that out, we're getting some assistance and perspective from an organization that is working across the country on this issue. It's not, you know, they have the expertise in this issue to help us as we work through it.
Absolutely correct. We're following their national menu at this point. We couldn't have done that on our own as short as we are.
Yeah, I'm sure that's just an overwhelming chore to try to meet all those mandates and keep it tasty. So, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Next up is the instructional update from Ms. Colley.
Chairman Carter, members of the board, Dr. Parrish, good evening. Just going to take a moment this evening to update you on a few of our instructional initiatives this year. We'll start with our license evaluation system. As you know, the Department of Education mandated that we begin a new license evaluation system starting July 1 of this year, and we've implemented that. To just remind you what's coming down the pipes is this year, we will be looking at our school-based administrator evaluation, and by July 1 of 2014, we'll have a new school-based administrator evaluation system in place that mirrors closely what we're doing with teacher evaluation. Some of you may have heard out in the schools that we're actually using some online database and software to manage the system. So, it's called NetChemia. It's the branch's Talent Ed Perform, and it basically gives us a way for teachers to very easily be able to enter their goals and keep track of observations online. Principals can then pull reports and see how things are moving along, keep track of deadlines, use email notifications and calendar settings to manage this. So, for lack of a better word, I've said, you know, it's a nice online filing system for us, but it also allows us at the division level to take a look at what we're doing in all four schools in terms of that. The teachers, as of now, have set SMART goals for the year, and principals and assistant principals are working very closely to support teachers in this process and really working together and through and using this as a learning and growth opportunity for teachers. Okay, just looking a little again at our balanced literacy implementation, wanted to bring you up to date, remind you, this is something that's funded by a Department of Defense Education Act grant. It includes our K5 literacy program, reading, writing, and word study. And I wanted to just bring you up to date on where we are in terms of professional development this year as we're implementing this model. All the schools have selected or in the process of selecting and holding half-days of planning together to really assess now after our quarter's gone, moving ahead with the program. We last week sent a team out to Chester, in Chesterfield, to observe balanced literacy where they've had a balanced literacy model for many years now, and the teachers are very excited at the opportunity to be able to go out and see balanced literacy in action. Next week, we have a different small group heading out to Stafford County where they're actually using the materials we use, benchmark literacy, and they'll be able to observe the materials in action and then come back together and share out with their respective staffs their observations and how that might help us plan as we move forward. And then we're planning a January 28 professional development for K5 where they'll be able to get together, sort of assess where they are, where we're going, and then use the expertise around us to really build and move forward this school year. We're also beginning in January, actually starting, looking at a template right now in November, December for a curriculum that will really pull all these pieces together for the teachers, and we'll start writing that in January, February with the teachers. And we mentioned certainly the rigor of all of the standards of learning that have changed. Math last year, English and science this year. And we just wanted to share that we are looking, we're taking a good, hard look at the K-12 math. Dr. Excaldo and I are meeting with the school-based administrators in the next week to really look at how we can support the professional development of teachers and what their needs might be. And then the principals together with the teachers are creating math plans for the school that will be turned in early in December so that we can really make sure that we're proactively addressing those needs. And with that, I would just say happy Thanksgiving. I had a slide for that. There it is. Thank you. I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to work here. I've certainly enjoyed my first few months, and I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. But I will entertain questions.
Any questions or anything there?
I'm impressed by this online data for the teacher evaluation. Do they put their SMART goals on there and everything?
Everything.
Gets involved in all this?
Everything, and it's very, you know, we're able to customize it to meet our needs. And so, we have our forms on, and if we decide to change them midstream, which it's an evolving process, so we have the capability of doing that. We also, what I really appreciate about this is right now, we have our licensed staff using the system, but the system has a capability to evaluate everybody soup to nuts. So, we can have every employee in and run lots of data as we move forward and add employee groups. And so, it's very nice and very customizable for what we're doing.
Are other school systems using the NetChemia?
I can, I know of a couple local, we were able to get in on Virginia Beach's RFP for actually purchasing it, and I believe Williamsburg, James City County is using it. They're the two that I know of that have shared out at our assistant superintendents meetings.
Thank you.
So, is this something that the teachers are doing different, where they have to actually use this program and enter? I mean, what's different?
That's a really good question. The difference is the whole evaluation system. The evaluation system is new this year based on the work of the committee last year in developing a model modeled after the state. The NetChemia piece is, the difference is, instead of a paper filled out or typed and printed, it's now a online form filled in and stored. That's, it mirrors exactly what they have in a hard copy of their handbook.
So, there's new rules, and this is like the new app for the new rules?
Exactly.
Yeah, and just a reminder to, and a reminder to board members and the community that this is, teacher evaluation system was put in place as a result of the new state laws that had every school division state putting a new teacher evaluation system in as of July 1 with 40% of that evaluation based on student growth or student achievement. And that was tied to the funding that the state took from the federal government. It was tied to the waiver that the state received from the No Child Left Behind Act.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Colley. Ms. Sedner, would you like to take us through the consent agenda, please?
The consent agenda for tonight consists of A, approval of minutes of October regular meeting and work sessions enclosed, B, approval of financial reports enclosed, C, approval of personnel action enclosed, D, authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed, and E, authorization to change appropriation in accordance with attached requests enclosed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
And Ms. Colley, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sedner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion carries with a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you. And there are no other matters for consideration? And any public comment, Ms. Colley?
There are none.
Okay, great. All right, Dr. Parrish, would you like to start us out with our communication piece?
Yeah, I think that Mr. Bowen has really covered it, but I just wanted to stress again the uncertainty that we're facing about budget because before we meet again, we will have seen the governor's proposed budget. As you know, and as Mr. Bowen highlighted, he did ask for 4% reduction from state agencies. It was certainly caused us a little bit of concern as to what that might mean for schools, but we have on the flip side seen some positive news about revenue increases. But we know much hinges on the federal government right now, and I suspect the budget that's put out by the government...
put out by the governor will hinge on that as well, because we could see direct cuts to our budget based on the federal government if sequestration occurs, but also, we know it could impact the economy. So I think we'll probably see this uncertainty until we see what comes from the federal government. And I think, so it could be that we see some uncertainty even after the governor puts out his budget, if things have not been completed in Washington. And then a reminder that the General Assembly does come into session, I believe it's January 11th, this January, so, you know, then it's a short session, it'll be moving fairly quickly, hopefully. But we'll be getting lots of information as we move forward. So when we see you at the next board meeting, we will not be able to provide you actual figures, because the governor puts his budget out, as you know, and then the Department of Education takes his budget and crunches the number for school divisions. But when we get back into January after the break, we should be able to get some numbers out to you. We are still anticipating cutting into the next budget year. It's just a matter of what those dollars will be for us when we do that. But on the positive side of things, we do have a holiday coming up, starting tomorrow. Our schools will be dismissing early, and I do want to wish all of our community members and faculty and staff a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. And I truly do appreciate all the hard work that they do for us on a daily basis for our children. And a thanks to the school board for the time that you continue to put in on behalf of the children of Pecosa.
Thank you. Jessie?
Thank you, board. Starting with the high school, lots of fundraisers are occurring for many things. The Key Club is sponsoring a UNICEF fund drive. There is an Operation Christmas Child, which is gifts for children in need, Toys for Tots campaign, and Cookies Because We Care is coming up to support U.S. troops. All cookies are due by December 14th. There has been hurricane assistance for Hurricane Sandy victims, and the Buckle Up program has been raising seatbelt awareness. The PHS marching band competed at War Hill and received a superior rating. So proud of them. PHS drama club successfully competed in the one-act play competition, and juniors received class rings and a ring ceremony on November 9. The competition cheer squad qualified for state competitions. Great job. At the middle school, the eighth-grade Holiday Chorus Musical will be Thursday, November 29 at 7:00. There will be a winter dance for Pecosa middle school students on Friday, November 30, from 6:30 to 9:00. And the holiday band concert will be Thursday, December 6 at 7:00. Now, at the elementary school, they just finished their Read-a-Thon fundraiser, and thank you, everyone, for their support. The fourth grade went to Jamestown on Monday and had a great time. Art club is in full swing, and environmental club is going to start soon. At the primary school, they had a terrific book character dress-up day. Everyone had their book and told about their character. The students paraded in the gym so parents and other grade levels could see their costumes. First grade classes attended a field trip to Yorktown to tour the town and find out about life in colonial times. In addition, they had their own colonial days, where they made soap, wrote with quill pens, played with colonial toys, and dressed as colonial children. Four teachers visited Chester, Virginia, to observe reading and the balanced literacy model. Kindergarten had the 50th Day of School. They had a sock hop. Children dressed as if they lived in the 1950s, ate ice cream sodas, and danced at the storm. Comparing today to years ago is an S.O.L. I wish I could have done that. Report cards went home on the 13th, and the primary school raised, had over 320 parents attend their annual Thanksgiving luncheon with the students. Many thanks to Aramark for all their efforts. And they also collected over 783 pounds of canned goods from Pecosa food pantry. That's a lot of food. And thank you, board. That concludes my report for the 20th of November.
Thank you. Mr. Hux.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to recognize Pecosa Education Foundation and all that they do to support our school system, and for all those interested in providing financial support, a brick on the legacy wall is a great way to honor a friend or family member. For more information on that, please see the Pecosa Education Foundation website.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Really enjoyed the inspirational reading tonight and the student presentation. I just thought that was fabulous, and the integration of the subjects in that economics unit. And I was just thinking that the primary school with the Thanksgiving meal, that really hopefully got us in the black, so to speak. Maybe we need to do a few more of those. Holiday meals and invite the parents.
Thank you, Mr. Melton.
Oh, without hard work, audits are not passed. Children don't learn as quickly. Children are not safe. All the buses are in the building, so I would like to say a Thanksgiving. Many thanks to our great teachers, our assistants in the classrooms, to our janitors, our maintenance department, our bus drivers, to our respectable students, and our great administrators in Pecosa City Schools. I'm very happy to live in Pecosa and have wonderful folks helping take care of our children.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cass.
Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Ms. Sidney?
I would like to thank the schools and all the administration, and have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who provided the updates tonight. I know you guys work hard and can't imagine it, so I appreciate all of your work. Thanks to the teachers and students. And as we head into the holiday season, please travel safely. Come back to us in one piece, ready to learn, and I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. We all have an awful lot to be thankful for, living in this tight-knit community and have lots of good friends and family around. It's a good place to live, so thank you very much. And is there any material for a board review?
Not this evening.
With that, we will adjourn.
No quotes?
No quotes tonight. I didn't have a chance to find a new quote.